We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. All right, we'll go ahead and start the meeting with a prayer. Mr. Bossarge?
Yes, everybody bow their heads please. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as we make these decisions that will affect this county. Continue to remind us that we all, what we are here for today, and all that we accomplish is in your glory. We ask these in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to amendments to the agenda. Mr. Cumbus?
I don't have any.
Mr. Morris?
I don't have any.
Mr. Taylor?
I have none.
I don't have any. Mr. Bossarge?
Good.
Chancery clerk?
None.
Administrator?
I have one for executive session for potential location of a business.
Road manager?
None.
Board attorney?
Yes, sir, I have one, a resolution of the board approving a letter of engagement hiring John Myers for appraisal services for 4211 Hospital Road. Also want to amend, in that same vein, amend to add a, an agreement with Air Masters to examine the air conditioning and heating system at 4211 Hospital Road for $2,500, and an amendment on 4211 Hospital Road related to that for a commercial assessment proposal in the amount of $4,500, and we'll have to do orders for the, for Air Masters and for the assessment, but if you'll put that under Board Attorney, and I will go through those very quickly.
All right. Any other amendments to the agenda?
I have an amendment for employee information under human resources consent.
All right, any other amendments? All right, do we have a motion to accept amendments as presented? We've got a motion by Mr. Cumbus?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Brings us to general public comment. Is anybody here for general public comment? Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
How many?
We've got a motion by Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bossarge. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Board Attorney?
Okay, I have a, first, I have a resolution under subsection A. This is a resolution to allow the president to execute an updated HealthGram employee benefit plan, acceptance of summary benefit coverage and summary of benefits coverage. Basically what this is, we have already, and Lindsay will correct me if I state anything wrong, we've already approved and accepted the county employee benefit plan. My understanding is that under the old plan, we allowed mental health therapists that were out of the network, Lindsay, to be considered in the network because of the limited availability of limit, of mental health therapist. The plan that's before you today is identical to the old plan, and I understand what happened when we approved the, the, the plan with HealthGram, the mental health therapists that were out of network were not considered in network. So we're basically truing up our, our health plan to make it the same as, at least in that regard, as the old health plan. It's just to clean that up. That makes sense. Lindsay, that's?
That's exactly correct.
Yeah. So the mental health therapists that are out of network will be considered in network, and that's the reason for this, for this resolution.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Mr. Cumbus?
I'll second.
Mr. Taylor? Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next thing I had was a resolution that I mentioned two or three board meetings ago. It's a policy that I wanted to establish where when the county is either sued in federal or state court, or the county receives a notice pursuant to the Mississippi Court Claims Act, how the county is to receive those. Basically what we're doing is we're following, we're going to make lawyers that want to sue us or send us notices of Court Claims Act claims to follow the law. The exception is that we're allowing Joey, in certain instances, Carol Whitfield, in certain instances, and Jennifer Freeman, in certain instances, instances to receive process. And so what we don't want to have anymore is notices of lawsuits or Court Claims Act claims, just come in and be put on somebody's desk. So we're going to tighten that up and make, make the lawyers that want to file a claim against the county to follow the law.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Bossarge? Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And one more comment on that. If they don't follow the resolution, which means they're not following the law, we'll be filing a motion to dismiss any claims that are filed against the county that don't, that don't follow the law. So the third thing I had was a resolution retaining Halsey-Cumless to do some title work and give us a title opinion, and if the board chooses to do so, to act as a closing attorney for 4211 Hospital Road in Pascagoula.
I'll make that motion.
We've got a motion by Mr. Bossarge. I'll, I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then the, the amendments that I made to the agenda, we have a resolution of the board approving a letter of engagement hiring John Myers to appraise the property of 4211 Hospital Road in Pascagoula.
I'll move.
A motion by Mr. Cumbus?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, two more quick things, both related to 4211 Hospital Road in Pascagoula. One is we received a quote from Air Masters, $2,500 for Air Masters to inspect the HVAC system at 4211 Hospital Road. The board approved that. We'll prepare an order for the president to sign.
Motion to approve that.
Got a motion by Mr. Morris?
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the last thing that I have is a, a quote from HIBS Home Inspection Building Specialist for $4,500 to inspect and provide a report on 4211 Hospital Road.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bossarge. Second by Mr. Cumbus. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's all I have, Mr. President. Mr. Fulton?
Two resolutions here regarding some TIF financing for developments along the Mallett Road corridor. The first one, I'll read the resolution or the, the heading of the resolution. Resolution of the Board Supervisors of Jackson County, Mississippi, directing the holding of a public hearing concerning a tax increment financing plan in connection with tax increment financing bonds of said county in a principal amount not to exceed $750,000 for the purpose of reimbursing the developer for certain costs of installing and constructing certain infrastructure improvements necessary for the development of the lost two apartments and related improvements within said county, directing the publication of notice of such public hearing and for related purposes. And Sue Fairbanks is here with Butler Snow, who's been involved with this. I don't know if the developers are here or not, but basically this resolution is asking to hold a public hearing on this. I believe the date is in January the 16th is the date, and this is to help with the development of that project. Some of the terms that we had talked about is the county basically would pledge 100% of the, of the change in ad valorem taxes, but would size the bonds based on 75% for a period of 15 years. And so this basically just asked to set the public hearing on the 16th, and at that time we'll hear it, the public will hear it, and you guys can decide to vote on it at that time.
You say the 15th?
21st, Brian.
21st, I'm sorry.
January 21st.
January 21st, based on 16th, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Cumbus, second by Mr. Bossarge. Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
The second resolution is resolution of the Board Supervisors of Jackson County, Mississippi, declaring the intention of Jackson County, Mississippi, to issue tax increment financing bonds of said county for the purpose of financing the cost of installing and constructing certain infrastructure improvements in connection with the development in the county known as La Moine Landing and related improvements in accordance with the authority granted to municipalities by the legislature with respect to tax increment financing and set forth in chapter 45 of Title 21 Mississippi Code of 1972 as amended, finding and determining that such project is a project eligible for tax increment financing in accordance with said act, directing the holding of a public hearing on a tax increment financing plan for such development and tax increment financing bonds, directing that to publication of notice of such public hearing and for related purposes. And so this is also on the Mallett Road corridor. This is a large commercial development called La Moine Landing. The bonds for this one, I believe, are up to $35 million. It's a large project. In this one, they'll be pledging 100% of the sales tax revenue, which we don't receive now. So this, this actually takes advantage of the legislation that we got changed a few years back, where we would, if it's a $10 million or more development in a tax increment financing district, that the county can receive sales tax revenue from the state, just like a city would. And so this is pledging that sales tax revenue for up to 20 years, and then also the ad valorem tax, the difference in ad valorem for 15 years. This also takes, takes advantage of the Rita, the Redevelopment Act, and we've discussed this. So this also would publish for the public hearing on the 21st of January.
I'll make that motion.
We've got a motion by Mr. Bossarge?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion?
Good.
Any opposed?
Do you want, Christiana, did you want to say anything, or are we good?
I'm here at the pleasure of the board, Christina Sub from Gross and Associates. We appreciate the board's support of this project. It's very exciting.
Been a long time coming.
It is. Yeah, it's a great project.
Yep.
All right, yeah. Motion carries. Finance.
Good morning. The first item I have is the order approving the claims docket.
Make that motion.
I'm second.
Motion by Mr. Morris, second by Mr. Cumbus. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the second item I have is the resolution authorizing the interfund loans for fiscal year September 30th, 2025.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Cumbus, second by Mr. Bossarge. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and the last item I have is the resolution authorizing the operating transfers for fiscal year September 30th, 2025.
Motion by Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Castani, or IT?
Good morning, good morning. Just want to discuss our intentions of installing a DR, disaster recovery system. I guess you, y'all were aware, a couple of weeks ago, we had a little incident with our virtual servers that were disabled for more than half a day. So by installing one of these DRs for our internal services, this should eliminate downtime in situations like this. So what we want to do is replace our VMware software that runs our virtual services with Newtonics. It's a pretty new system that Nate, Nate Sohms is our new systems administrator, or systems analyst, too, that has worked with Newtonics, and he's going to be helping us install this. So with this procurement, we can install new servers, new storage, and other applications with Newtonics. We can put this DR temporarily at the ADC and, until the EOC building is completed within the, you know, hopefully next year or so. Should be an easy plug and unplug from the ADC to the EOC. And like I said, there should be no downtime, very little downtime, and Nate has worked with Newtonics before, previous positions, and is saving a good, a good cost of engineering services with us doing it in-house. So, we have any questions?
There's really no, I mean, the cost of it is included in Paul's current budget, so there's no budget amendment for it. I just wanted him to kind of tell you all what we were doing because it's a pretty significant change.
It sounds like it, Jim.
It is.
This, this VMware that we're talking about is their main, the main software that runs our virtual servers that run the county. And VMware was bought out by Broadcom, Broadcom a couple of years ago, and Broadcom, they have been increasing our annual maintenance, almost doubling it, almost tripling it every year. It's, it's a ridiculous cost that they are charging us. And when we had our incident a couple of weeks ago, their support was little to none, which was very, very disappointing, as much money as we're paying for support and maintenance with VMware. So that got us jumping, you know, hey, we gotta, we gotta find a solution to this, and Nate, like I said, had worked with Newtonics, which is another virtual, you know?
Yeah, another virtual infrastructure system.
And the cost, too, is with Newtonics, we can, we are replacing our servers, which are at end of life right now. So we're getting new servers, new storage, and again, getting rid of VMware software. So that's why we, we're thinking that the cost is going to be a washout because our, our three existing maintenances, SmartNet, Pure Storage, and VMware, almost equal the cost of what this first year payment is for Newtonics. So, and this is a DR that we've been trying to get in place for a couple of years. I hate giving excuses, but these last four or five years has been, you know, COVID, implementation of Workday, which took, took a little while for us, and so a DR for this particular part of our data center is very important for the county. So. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Any questions? No questions?
Super. Mr. Etheridge?
Morning.
Morning.
I just catch y'all where we are on our station upgrades and repairs. The majority of our fire stations are 30, 40 years plus, so we're having to go through and do a lot of work to them. The Big Ridge Road Fire Station, right there in the curve, we just did the air conditioner system and heat system that's been redone. Waiting for the metal to hit the ground so the contractor can reskin the building, re-roof the building. Fort Ramsey Station purchase ordered was issued for that, to finish the driveway. That was never finished for the fire trucks. Ballpark with the driveway has partially collapsed. Contractors out there this morning, well, when you put three inches of asphalt down, it don't support the fire trucks very well. It tends to, tends to collapse. So we're going back with a seven inch of reinforced concrete there. Contractors out there today, working on that, waiting to get some quotes on the River Road Station to reskin and re-roof it. So that's kind of where we are, and I'm still waiting on the structural engineer to give us the information so we can proceed with the roof repairs to the Fort Ramsey Station right there at Joe, Joe Bat, what we call in Station 6. So that's where we are on the station upgrades. I was asked?
Now, is that Station Earl going to eventually be manned?
Once we do the repairs to it, we're waiting on the, you still haven't said nothing.
Yeah, we gave them the notes from our last meeting out there. So, yeah, we need to get a proposal started with them. So I expect that to be done in January.
Yeah. The station on Saracena, the iron's up. We expect them to start hanging, hanging the skin on it for much longer. Contractors should start?
On the new EOC, January time frame?
Probably February. Now, we did something on the agenda today to have to re-award the project, and so now we'll be signing the contract in January, and they'll probably be getting started in February. So we may be looking at a groundbreaking ceremony for that project, either late to early February is kind of what I'm thinking.
That's kind of where we are on the buildings. I was asked to advise y'all with a copy of our organizational chart and then one with everybody listed. I emailed that out last week. Did everybody get that?
Yes.
Sir, was there any questions on that, or anything you wanted to ask me?
I'll, I'll have a couple of questions. I'll get back to you.
Okay, okay. Anything else, Stu?
Hey, Earl, so on the new EOC building, is there a reason why we can't put this upgraded computer stuff that we're doing to, to protect ourselves in that EOC building?
That's, that's been done.
Okay, all right, because you've got, you'll have the toughest building in the county that's got generator backed up, everything's backed up there.
Yeah, we're going to give Paul a corner about, about this big.
Okay.
I can't show, but it's about that big, but yeah.
It gets smaller every year.
Oh, no, no.
Heard there was riff going on.
No, it's no riff. He just didn't want to know, well, I was charging him to do it, he didn't like that.
Okay, okay. You and him could work that out.
Yeah, we got it.
We just need it in that location because that's the safest location for?
We got room.
The county's computer system.
We got room.
Good, good.
Anything else?
Sounds good. Are we going to talk about the deputy director position? If so, that probably should be an executive session, which it is not. Go to the executive session, I think, if we need?
Pardon? Yeah, if we need to bring up a personnel issue, we can do it, we can add it.
Right, sure. Yeah, we'll do it then.
Okay.
So we're going to do that? Y'all want me to come back for that or not?
Do we need, we need to amend the agenda for that?
Need to amend the agenda.
So, yes.
I'll hang around.
Okay. All right, senior services.
Good morning. Passing around our budget. I think I've got one for everybody. Need another one?
Got one for Brad.
I've got another one. So I have with me today the two commissioners, which of course is Mr. Josh Eldridge, who's sitting up here, is our Jackson County Commissioner, and Carla Brooks, who's our George County Commissioner, who's in the audience. I would like to, the first two pages are about our budget, but if we could skip to the third and fourth page, what that shows is the services that were provided in Jackson County last fiscal year, FY '24. So the one chart shows each month in that fiscal year about how many services were provided in Jackson County, and then there's the breakdown of some of the services, which of course, the main services we provide are adult and children's mental health, mainly adult mental health. That is the majority, you can see in 64%. Anything, and you know, we are a community mental health center, so we are certified through the Department of Mental Health. There are core services that we have to provide. Each of those services that you see here are services that are required to be a community mental health center. 64% of those are mental health, and even though we listed out, those were mainly the, the majority of what we provide. However, there's some on here that are not listed separately, like our mobile crisis team. That would probably be within our outpatient services for mental health, and certain other services that may be more specific that may not be listed individually out. But you can see our medication clinic, at that time, last fiscal year, we had four service providers. We had a physician, a psychiatrist, and two psychiatric nurse practitioners. Currently, in Jackson County, we just have the one physician, so that number will probably be a little bit less for this fiscal year. Psychosocial rehab, which is an adult program for adults with mental illness, that is one of our bigger programs in Jackson County. And then the more crisis-focused programs like ICOURT, CSU, Navigate, things like that. The second group is the alcohol and drug. That's about 20% of the services we provide. We do have an alcohol and drug residential, 22 beds, and outpatient services like an intensive outpatient and medicated assisted treatment. And then, of course, our ADD, which is intellectual and developmentally disabled, that is another service, which you can see that the day service is adults, is one of our bigger programs. We also have a group home that has six individuals that live there under supervised living. Some of them have lived there for 10-plus years. Any questions about any of the services that were provided in FY '24? Okay, then we have the budget. It's a little under $10 million. And of course, you see the budget, and then I have a breakdown of the expenses versus the revenues. Just keep in mind, you know, this is a projection. It's based on previous years and what we project for the next fiscal year. So when you look at revenues, of course, we have grants that are available to us through the Department of Health and state, and federal grants. Even though those monies are available does not mean that you actually get all those monies. There's, you have to make sure certain positions are filled, and... There's, you have to make sure certain positions are filled and our services are provided in order to get to access all those funds. And then, of course, Medicaid reimbursement is a projection as well. You may have, even though you bill Medicaid, you may not get reimbursed for Medicaid. And you never can know exactly what you're gonna get as far as insurance and Medicaid goes. And of course, as far as our expenses, the majority of our expense is personnel. I don't know if all of you have seen, we had our Mental Health Association of all the executive directors in the state that presented at the Public and Human Services Committee. It was a hearing at the Capitol on December 5th. If you did not see that, I would encourage you to go back and look at it because it explains very well about community mental health. Because even though we're a public entity, community mental health, we are a business. Meaning that you have to provide a service in order to get reimbursed. And that service is time. We sell time. And if you don't provide those services and don't, you know, you don't get reimbursed. Number one, you can't bill. And then the money you are reimbursed, it does not cover the cost of the service. So if you didn't see that, it's very informative because it's a unique system. And we, there is a group, the Office of the Mental Health Accessibility, the Coordinator of Mental Health Accessibility, they have a team. And they have been monitoring the financials of community mental health centers for the past several years. And of course, the financial person, Jerry Mayo, he talked at that. He talked first and so he kind of explains the history of community mental health and where it is today. And he's been studying the financials across the state. And aggregate of all the eleven mental health center regions that are left, the profit margin is at one point three percent. So if anybody has a business, which, you know, this is a business, that's not much of a profit. That you don't have a lot of money to put into your, to raises for your staff, to your buildings, to transportation, and all the things that it takes to run a community mental health center. And, you know, you'll also see the president of our association who talks on that, at the hearing, and talks about the mental health center being in a crisis state across the state of Mississippi, much like the rural hospitals. There were originally fifteen mental health centers. There's now eleven and there's others, including this one, at a risk of dissolving because of the financial status. And the solutions for that are, is reimbursement is how we're reimbursed. Again, we can only bill for services that are provided. So workforce challenge is a challenge all over the state. It is for our region as well. This time last year, we may, I think we had about a hundred and fifty-seven, fifty-eight employees. We're down to less than one-thirty. You have to have clinical staff that's in programs that provide the services. So when you have less staff providing services, that's less money that comes into your mental health center. And again, it's a problem all over the state. Some of that is, you know, we are certified through the Departmental Health. So they talk about solutions when you, if you were to look at that hearing. And some of that is, some talk about Medicaid expansion for the state. Some talk about, there's a model called CCBHC, Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic, which Region fourteen is one of those. However, there's, where the state can be a part of that system and have what they call a PPS rate, a proposed payment system. And that reimburses at a higher rate than what we get reimbursed. Do you have any specific questions about the budget?
I've got a few. My first one starts out with the budget page. Is there any fat built into these expenses? Because your intake and outgo is exactly zero. So it means that you've spent every single dollar, you've actually budgeted to spend every single dollar you take in. That's a little concerning, even if you have to reduce something somewhere. I would think you would want to build a little bit of fat.
That's right. And usually when I'm here, I have my finance people with me, my CFO or someone else. And currently, we do not have CFO. I've had three people in my business department that left. Of course, they did this budget and that's how we've done it every year. Because you have to, in my understanding, is you have to zero out. But as far as what's in the budget, I can explain a little bit more on that. Just give me a second.
And then what is your cash on hand, like cash balance?
Our cash on hand.
Because you gotta have a cushion somewhere.
No, we don't have a cushion. We have less than thirty days of cash on hand. We probably, as of today, haven't looked at it today, have about four hundred thousand dollars in the bank. That is a critical situation.
Right, and that's a service that we, every community needs to have this service because we all know folks that have mental health emergencies or mental health issues that are ongoing are oftentimes the folks that we find getting arrested and going to jail. And that's not where we need folks that have mental disabilities or mental issues.
That's correct.
We need to treat them and have them out in the community being productive citizens. So it's a critical service, but we've got to make sure that accountability is there and the thing is running away to where whoever the partners are in an organization know where the dollars are going. And in Jackson County, we're willing to make it work, but we've got to have the right accountability to make sure it works.
Right, and I feel like we've worked over the last years to try, I mean, I think we're as transparent as we can be. And basically, and if you listen to, I really urge you to listen to that because it's just, the math does not add up. You do not get reimbursed for the cost of what it costs to provide. And it talks about like the grants that we receive from the Departmental Health. They have not changed in what you receive in over a decade. Whereas, you know, cost for food, cost for gas, insurance, all the things have gone up. So it doesn't keep up pace. Same thing with Medicaid reimbursement. Now, we did just receive after a decade, a little bump in Medicaid reimbursement, but it still doesn't keep up with the cost. Because it's, you have to provide the service. So that doesn't account for HR, it doesn't account for, you know, your admin. It doesn't account for buildings, transportation, all the things that you need to be able to run a mental health center.
Yeah, and to make sure that the public is clear. If you were a business and you ran off with only Medicare patients, you would go bankrupt. Because Medicare doesn't reimburse at a rate that actually pays the bills. They're a little bit below. And if you go to a private healthcare provider like Humana or somebody, Blue Cross Blue Shield, they pay at a rate based on X times Medicare, Medicaid rate. And that's how they come up with their rates. So that's why the private payers are important for private organizations to make it. And it's where a public sector entity like this has trouble.
And also any delay in reimbursement. So for instance, you know, we get our grants. So the legislature, there's money that goes into Departmental Health and they funnel it through the Departmental Health to the mental health centers. So you have to apply for those monies. We submitted us, Region fourteen, over, you know, thirty-five grants every year. Well, our fiscal year begins July 1st and there was a delay in the awards, which usually you don't get your awards from those grants that you write till, you know, maybe August. This may be the earliest we've ever got them, in the middle of August. But this year, they didn't, we didn't start receiving awards till late September and some, and partial, some of them, October. Meaning that you provide those services that you get that are totally grant, when they don't even cover the cost, first of all. So you're providing all these services for free, basically. The only reimbursement you're getting is Medicaid. And again, you don't get that when somebody comes in to see you. You have to bill the Medicaid and wait for it to come. So we ran July, August, September without any reimbursement with, from our grants. And as you can see, in this region, it is a little bit different because if you hear them talk on that public health, that most, it's usually lopsided. So a lot of the other mental health centers have more Medicaid reimbursement than what we do in our area just because of the area that we're in. So we rely more on grant funding as far as the Medicaid because we have a lower Medicaid population in our area. We're one of the lower ones in the state. So just having a delay of those funds. And even the grants are different. There's the cost reimbursement grants, there's fee-for-service grants. And the difference, the cost reimbursement, they pay for positions. And it's not the entire, what you pay your, the staff to work, you know, there's, because we're in PERS, so our fringe is higher. Not all mental health centers are in PERS. And so that's, that's why we became into this critical position. We basically had no cash flow, or very little cash flow from July until starting sometime in October. Now, we're catching up on that. We've, we're on top of billing all our cost reimbursement grants, but about half of our grants are fee-for-service, meaning you have to provide the service in order to get the reimbursement. And there's a little bit of a delay in that just because you have to close out things in your EHR system. It's a cumbersome process to bill those grants and to make sure they're correct when you do bill them. We just started billing for July services last week, late last week. So we'll have that money filtering in. But, you know, any delay, in fact, I mean, it wasn't just Region fourteen, it was all over the state. There were, there were other mental health centers that were concerned possibly about having, you know, payroll because of that, because, you know, you haven't received any of your funding. And just imagine if you're a business owner, if you have a restaurant or something and you're feeding most of your customers for free, you can't do that for very long. And if you look at the last five years for Region fourteen, about fifty percent of the people we serve have no payer source or indigent. But as far as the, you know, the contractual services, usually we may have a little bit of a breakdown, but that's things like our telephone, our utilities, or any leases we may pay. Any professional services like temp services, a lot of, some of our programs, mainly our CSU, there may be some difficulty in hiring staff. So we do utilize temp service for nurses and for the aides that work in that program. So all of that goes into that cost. But that's what we're looking at now. Of course, I'm looking at it.
Was the ARPA money, was that used for like recurring costs or was that a one-time thing?
It's a one-time and we have until.
I mean, was it used for a one-time expense? Like, or was it an expense that y'all have every year that you used it to pay for? Did you pay to operate with ARPA money or did you buy something? I'm just wondering if it filled a bigger deficit hole or not.
ARPA was designated for certain different, for certain grants. So for instance, we have for CSU, there's ARPA funding available to us that we haven't utilized yet to expand from an eight-bed to a sixteen-bed. They prolonged, I mean, we have until October 2026 to utilize that money. That money was for, and I'd have to look specifically at the grant, but it was to expand from the eight to the sixteen, meaning furniture, you know, furniture, everything that you have to have to expand to a sixteen, as well as personnel. But there was another, there's another, like our court liaison is a ARPA-funded position. Now, in this county, we've had somebody going to Chancery Court for as long as I've been here, twenty-one-plus years. But there was no funding. But because of ARPA, they did fund a position for, but like we're still waiting on reimbursement from FY24 of about a hundred and six thousand dollars of what we have. And that was for a position that we have not really been reimbursed yet. Not for just that position, but for, we had an adolescent offender program that was through ARPA that we had hired someone for the youth court to develop a program. We're waiting on what we submitted for that funding that has not been reimbursed. But many of our positions like that, we would not have those positions because there's no way to pay for those positions. We're able to have those positions because of a grant. However, you know, as you can, you know, like I just mentioned, we're still waiting on reimbursement from that from last, you know, the beginning of FY24. I mean, the beginning of this year, of calendar year 2024. So it makes it difficult. Like I have not replaced that position because of that reason. Because I never got reimbursed for the person that was there before. Which makes it difficult. As we all know, youth court, you know, they need support from their mental health center. Which we do have a juvenile outreach program, but that only allows for a therapist and a community support specialist to be there eight hours a week. And from what, you know, when I'm, my meetings with youth court, I mean, they like somebody more often than that.
Like, so with the ARPA money, was there a vision like, alright, when we get this CSU expanded out to more beds, we're gonna put these things in place to where it can at least come close to sustaining itself? Or was it one of those things, well, we're gonna build it and then we're gonna figure out how to pay for it later?
Well, this came from the legislature. So it wasn't, and so that, their vision was to have.
But your job, once you receive grant money, is to make sure it's sustainable long-term.
Correct, but the, what you get reimbursed does not cover the cost. So you rely on what you can bill services. However, past fiscal years, we serve about seventy-two percent of the people that come through our CSU have no payer source. So that means twenty-eight percent have Medicaid. But you can bill, but you don't get reimbursed all that money.
Did y'all do like a pro forma though to say, alright, if we do this, we're gonna generate this much revenue. We're gonna have this much of a shortfall. We'll have to make that up somewhere and then go after, you know, all the counties involved and whoever the partners are and say, we're gonna have to make this difference up somewhere.
You do do that, however, it is a projection and it does not cover the cost. Mississippi was a demonstration state for the CCBHC, the prospective pay system. And that was kind of our hope. We were a pilot site. Region fourteen and Region six were the two pilot sites for this demonstration. That was what I was hoping that would happen. Because what that means is that you would be reimbursed for each service that you provide at a higher rate. Much, you know, that actual covers the cost. That's what it looks like when they, when they look at that prospective pay system. They look at your cost of, and they look at it individually from each mental health center. How much, you know, do buildings cost? Does, everything that it takes to run a mental health center and your prospective pay system is based on your cost. And Mississippi was not chosen as a demonstration state. We knew, our, and like Mr. Eldridge has, he's been looking, you know, at our financials and it has decreased basically every year as far as the money decreasing. It was like this prior to COVID. COVID actually helped us in a way that, you know, we had PPP money and different things. But that is also gone, basically.
Right, and I've always said that COVID money and the PPP money, ARPA money, all that was, was a way to basically make people feel like they had a lot of cash until the prices all went up and it caught up. And then you're lucky if you broke even.
Right, and so like some of these positions that are specifically ARPA, I don't know that us or any other mental health centers. Some mental health centers chose not to even do those positions because they know it's not sustainable in the long run. And that's why I urge people to really look at that hearing from the Capitol. It was on December 5th. You can go back and look at it because it really talks about the urgency of the mental health system in Mississippi and that if we don't do something different, that there may not be none in ten years. You know, and of course, we don't want that to happen because we do serve a lot of people. And new people, you know, you'd be surprised how many new intakes we do every week. I mean, there's new people that come in every day to the mental health center. And our CSU, you know, of course, we, you know, we're in a temporary building at this moment, which is a little bit different than where we were. You know, people were coming to that as opposed to going to the emergency room and things after they knew that we existed and, you know, they've been through our program. And that's what we want. We want somebody in a mental health crisis to come to those kind of programs as opposed to an emergency room or jail. And of course, y'all got the report, the quarterly report from the House bill. I didn't know if y'all had any questions about that report or any other questions.
I'd like to ask some, if I may. Who, go ahead down there. Okay, okay. First of all, kind of house cleaning. Is this a presentation for us to accept a budget or to approve a budget? Does anyone know the answer to that? Does anyone know the answer to that?
I could speak to it or Mr. Colmer? Yes, so the bu, so basically, even though Jackson County was part of creating, uh, the region, um, you basically, according, according to the statute that we've been discussing, basically it's a presentation to us. We don't approve, don't disapprove. Uh, you guys get one appointment on that board and we're basically almost just a vendor of Senior River Services, uh, so.
Okay, good enough, thank you. Okay, uh, normally when we see any set of numbers similar to budget like this, you always see the proposed year, which is twenty twenty-five. And always you see the at least one prior year, actual expenditures and revenues compared to a budget. And we don't have that here and it would be nice to see that in terms of several years. Now, you, you mentioned you lost your CFO. Who actually put these numbers together for you?
It was our CFO and he does work with us part PRN, part-time, so I can ask him for that. He, he's still working with us.
Uh, on the income, I do not see us. I don't see Jackson County or George County.
It's the, uh.
Local tax funds.
Right.
Three hundred thirty-eight thousand.
So that.
Local tax funds, okay. I'd like to see that, you know, by county. In the, the last two pages, you, you pointed out services and you're giving us Jackson County only. Why, why can't we see what George County is doing also?
We can. I, I presented to George County, um, two weeks ago and gave them just theirs, but we certainly can do it as the, the entire, uh, mental health center.
Okay, but the most significant thing I'd like to see is some past history, uh.
Mr. Taylor's point there is really good and it goes into what I asked about earlier. I like to look at it and see if there was a cash balance at some point in the past, how that cash balance has fared over time. So over three years, were we going up? Were we breaking even or have we been dropping for all eternity?
Right.
Well, uh, I'm, I've been in a meeting for you guys to know you'd want to see some of that. So I've, I've put a little spreadsheet together here. It comes straight for the, from the audits except for twenty twenty-four. Um, because twenty twenty-four, we still don't have an audit done. Uh, but I took what was presented to us, uh, as a cash balance sheet in, in the board minutes. So, uh, like I stated earlier, we're, you know, we're basically a vendor. You get an appointment, but that's why the partnerships are so important, right? Now, I want to hit on cash balance pretty hard here because budget really is projections. What's happened in the past is, is reality and what we can expect in the future. But what I did is I took the ending cash for each year based on the, uh, based on the audits and then I backed out the loans, right? Because we don't, we don't get loans every year. I mean, uh, so to get to what your real cash balance was, you can see, you know, on average, we're losing six hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Well, we only started this year with what, what's my number there? Uh, basically two hundred thousand bucks. So we're losing fifty thousand dollars a month and I, I want to dive in. I know, you know, but talk about transparent, we need to be as transparent so everybody understands the situation and how, you know, how tough the situation is right now. Uh, so I know Mr. Ross asked about cash balance, four hundred something thousand. But had it not been from an advance from the state, what would our cash balance be right now?
Well, we were in a very critical spot when we got that advance.
So, yeah, like we.
I mean, we, you know, what you do not want to happen is your community mental health center to close abruptly.
That's right. So there was a seven hundred fifty.
So when, when you get the cash advance though, that's not, that's basically taking money that you're going to make in the future and getting it today. So then when you get to the future, you're going to be even further short. You've just kicked the can.
Well, it does not solve the problem, that's correct.
So if we were losing fifty thousand a month and we only had two hundred thou, unless there's been some drastic changes that, you know, that I'm unaware of, God, we're in a critical, critical spot. Um, and, um, it's, it's really, it's really, I don't know how it goes on much longer. Um, so, you know, that's, you know, I think that's why, I mean, the, this has been getting discussed year after year after year. This ain't something that's a surprise to anybody having this discussion. And I mean, that's, I think that's why this board tried getting creative over the last several years because like you said, other regions has higher Medicaid rates. I mean, community mental health centers, even though so, some are in dire position, some.
Are not.
Are not, they're being very successful. But in our, with our population, the only way to be successful that I could come up with was to partner closer with the counties, you know? But unfortunately, we've not had any success there. I think we, we've went through, you know, hey, could this board have another board member? Let's work together on legislation for that. That, that way they can invest, right? But they have some control, right? We couldn't get anywhere with that, you know? Uh, could we figure out how to separate before it collapses? Uh, so that you could get in stronger regions, right? That's what's happened in the other three or four instances. When they closed, you get with a stronger region, change your population. We can't get nowhere with that, you know? Uh, we can't even agree to even sit down and talk. I'm out of suggestions. I need y'all to give me a plan because I don't have one anymore. Everything that I've suggested has been shot down. And, and just closing and not having these people having services is, is not going to work. I mean, we can't allow that to happen, so.
I agree.
I, maybe y'all come up for some gest, some suggestions. I don't have none, you know, I'm out of them. So, uh, but it's a critical point.
It is a critical point.
And we need to make sure we get our patients taken care of.
Yes, and, uh, we do continue to see the patients, so that is a good thing. However, there is, you know, because of the loss of staff, um, you know, it, it's, doesn't help. It's a, it's a problem all over the state and so you don't want to continue to go on that path where you're losing more and more staff to provide the services.
It's getting to the point people are comfortable signing checks, correct?
Yes.
What, what does that mean? Please, help me. You're, you're not signing checks, you can't sign checks?
But they're getting, because you can't sign a check if there's not money in the bank.
I would agree with that.
But there's money in, there is money in the bank, it's just very low.
It's made for a grant.
You want to, well, we still bill Medicaid and receive Medicaid every week and private insurance and other, and patient fees. So I'm having to report to the, to the, uh, Bill Rosemond, the coordinator of mental health accessibility. I have to report every week how much money is in the bank, how much came in, how much goes out. Um, so I'm reporting that every week.
Has anybody like developed some type of a, here's the path forward to make this work or has anybody?
The way to make it work is you, we have to have money. So there has to be an influx of money. That's the bottom line. There has to be money for it to work. And, uh, because even though we're providing services, billing services, what you bill is not, I mean, the reimbursement does not cover the cost. So I mean, we are looking at costs and how to cut costs. I mean, that's all you can do right this moment is cut costs. But there has to be, and I think we've talked about it, there has to be an influx of money for this to work.
Yeah, I mean, even from a, from a board standpoint, it makes different on the commissioners because you've lost so many people in your finance department. I mean, I think the last set of finances we've seen was May.
Right.
Right, and we're in December. So it's very difficult to go in and approve and approve things. We don't know where you're at.
Right, well, and you know, like when you, we have our board ma- meeting later this week. I mean, you'll see what, how much cash is there, how much bills need to be paid.
Right, yeah, if we paid our bills, there's no cash, right?
If we paid every bill, well, there may be a, a little bit, but would there be payroll? It just depends on how much came in.
What I'm saying is.
You don't want to live paycheck to paycheck.
That's right.
Let me ask this, um, most of the budgets we see that come before us, there's always a line item in here for, uh, repairs and maintenance. How many, how many buildings do y'all, do we have in Jackson County?
Well, you, and y'all can help me out because I know y'all have looked at it. Um, I'd have to sit here and calculate.
I'd guess about six.
About six buildings? So that hundred thousand dollars for equipment, is that kind of what you use for repairs and maintenance?
So contractual services in, and I'm looking at last year that, uh, our CFO had broken down. But like for telephone and office cell phones, that the people that are out in the, uh, the community, it was like a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Utilities, power, gas, water, pest control, a hundred and ninety-two thousand. Uh, building rent, a hundred nine thousand. Equipment rent, four thousand. Repair and maintenance, sixty-six thousand. That's equipment and building repairs. Um, insurance, about four hundred thousand. Um, professional fees, that's your contracting with your psychiatrist. Temporary nursing staff is almost at a million dollars. Uh, professional fees, attorneys, about eighty thousand. Medication purchase, because we do have to buy medicines for the people that we serve. Now, we may have grants that reimburse us, but again, like our Medicaid assisted program, I mean, we, we buy the medicines and you may not get reimbursed for six months down the road. So last year, it was about two hundred nine thousand. Transportation, about sixty-six thousand, so.
So all that's out of contractual services. That's what makes up that two million. So what makes up the, uh, if, if you're doing contractual services for RNs and all that, that's in that two million dollars also?
Yeah, just the, uh, professional fees and consultants, which is psychiatrists, temporary RNs, staff, your auditor fees, lab fees is almost a million dollars just for that.
See, that's something like on most budgets, they break out, you know? And, and because I, I just tell you the reason why I'm asking this is because, uh, several months ago, when I was at one of y'all's meetings there in Goshay, at the Goshay building, um, I just got to tell you, and I, I know you're trying to do the best you can do with what you got. I even told Josh this, but that, that, that building's not.
All our buildings need repair.
Yeah, it, it's just not, if I was needing treatment and I went into that building, I would say, uh, I don't know about this. I might have to look somewhere else. So, you know, that's what I'm saying. I, I'm just, uh, you know, I was telling Josh that after the meeting. I said, I'm just not impressed with the building maintenance.
Well, we would agree that we, and, and, you know, there's, that building may be better, one of the better ones. Um, so the, we agree and that, and if you, I really urge all of you to listen to that public health because Jerry Mayo, who was the executive director of Pine Belt Mental Health, even when I worked there, he was the CFO, he's a CPA, and he became the executive director. He talks about all that. And so, and it, and it's across the state. And they talk about the mental health centers being in imminent danger and we're, we're the one in imminent danger, region fourteen. We have less than thirty days cash on hand. They want you to have at least ninety days cash on hand. Um, so there's four community mental health centers that are less than ninety days and we're less than thirty days.
We, we could help you out with the buildings if y'all were willing to sign over the buildings to us and put them in the county's name. We could provide all the maintenance and, and stuff for you and, because they'd be in Jackson County's name. You know, kind of like we do some other buildings. We, we'll put them in our name and we'll provide the maintenance for the taxpayers' advantage, you know? So I'd be willing to look at doing that if y'all would be willing to do that.
Well, of course.
Just Jackson County, not, not George County.
Right, of course, all that's out of my hands. I have no say so.
No, that's just a suggestion I'm making, yeah.
You, you're a collector of information, basically, and you're working the best you can.
I know we're, we're giving you tough information and I'm not pointing a finger. It's just, you know, we got to be as transparent for this board so that we can make sure the patients are taken care of.
No, I agree and, uh.
And, you know, basically, what, what you've told us is our model doesn't work and we've spent three years trying to change that model and it won't be, I mean, so y'all have to give us a solution because, because we're, I don't know, I don't know what else to do. I mean, and I don't think y'all know, I mean, I don't think the region knows what to do because the model has to be changed to be successful and, and provide the care.
Josh, I can't see how you make it through the rest of the year with this. I mean, we're so far in the, in the red on our operating every year that it's not sustainable. I mean, and we're, you got a million dollar ARPA grant in there for this year's budget and that's going away too, you know? I mean.
And some of that ARPA grant was based on new spending. So it wasn't like it was just pure money in the bank for cash balance. You've got to spend some of that for dedicated reasons.
And then you look at the deferred maintenance, back to what Randy was saying. Some of those buildings are in terrible shape. It's embarrassing, actually. I spent a full day out there looking at all those facilities and they're not in good shape. I mean, I, this is going south.
I mean, we, we've got a, there's a moral obligation to fix this right now. The problem we've got is there's got to be an accountability that comes with, with the money that fixes it.
Yep.
Right.
At the end of the day, it, we're getting the phone calls, you're not, okay? The, well, let me take that back. We're getting the majority of the phone calls that you're not getting, okay? About conditions, about the way it's operated, not, this person not being able to be seen for some reason, whatever. We get those phone calls, you know? Even though we're not as involved in it as, as you are and your board is, we're getting those phone calls. You know, so, because everybody thinks if it's got Jackson County's name on it, we're responsible and a lot of times we're not, but we do our best to take care of our citizens as needed. You know, we, we do a lot more than what we're supposed to do, but that's what we do because that's what we're here for. So at the end of the day, it's not, it's, we're not saying you're not able to do what you do. We're just here to help. I think I made that clear several months ago at one of y'all's meetings. I'd be willing to get this board, hopefully to buy y'all some vans. There's no sense in those children not being able to be transported for treatment with broke-down vans. It's the first time I've heard of that. So we'd be willing to fix them, buy y'all some or whatever, you know, to keep this program going. But, you know, I can't just say, hey, I'm going to give you this, you've got to come ask and, and then we consider it and if we do it, we do it, you know? But mental health is important in this county. I don't, as, as a retired deputy sheriff, I can tell you that, you know, a lot of our calls are for mental health issues. So I can just tell you that it's very important that we maintain some level of mental health with the best service we can provide for, for our citizens.
Well, there's definitely a lot of potential, uh, uh, you know, there is a lot of potential. There's a lot of room to grow and do better. Um, so, you know, even with the transportation, I mean, there's probably half our vans, you know, need.
The bottom line, all of this can be fixed. The problem is we've got, we, I'm not willing to throw money at something until we have a direction that we're going in and we know it's going to be fixed. That's the unfortunate thing and the problem there is the longer it gets drug out and the worse this gets. We're not going to suffer as individuals. The people who need the services are going to suffer and I want to get it fixed before they suffer.
I agree with you a hundred percent and I'm willing to do anything to help make that happen.
That, do we, I mean, right, a, a budget that's just in comparison to prior year's budgets, I mean, do we, do you have a plan to make sure we don't go into the red any further this year?
Well, uh, the only thing I can do at this moment is cut, cut costs and part of our problem is the, the delay in the grants. So w- once we were awarded the grant, so that was the first that I had no control over. So nobody did, that you have no control whether, when you, when you get your awards. Now, once you get your awards, then it's up to us to do what we have to do to send in the reporting to access those grants, the cash reimbursement. We've, on top of that, even though our, majority of our finance department is no longer there, so we are on top of the cost reimbursement. Did put a plan in where I have a team of staff that have, uh, that, that are on this fee for service and like I said, I think that we're going to be able to access it quicker than I thought we were, uh, two weeks ago. Um, and we submitted some of that now. Will it cover the cost of everything? I, I don't know that. I don't, I don't think so, but it's, you know, I do have some things that I will talk to y'all about in our board meeting later this week. Yes, I have a list of things, actually.
Does your budget, is there, when you present budgets like to the board, your board, is it broke down by, by, by line of service? And you get to see how much grant funding goes into that line of service? How much has to go to that line of service out of that grant? How much money that line of service is losing or making if it's a profitable line? So that you can look and see, all right, we're doing good in all these areas, but this area right here is where we need help because that's where we could look for partnerships with the hospital system or some other agency, uh, or, or grant or maybe funding, whatever, whatever it is.
We do, but I think your biggest concern is that it's from months prior. We do, but I think your biggest concern is that it's from months prior, it's, because they do.
I haven't seen one for, we're sick, we're on a calendar, uh, fiscal year of June thirty, I haven't seen one for this year. So, we're almost sick halfway through the year, and we've not seen a budget, because we don't have the finance team to put it together, and Beth, you know, she's trying to be the executive director, the accountant, and, and, I mean, that's what I'm saying, they've got.
She's putting a spot to where it's very hard to succeed in.
Right.
She's gotta, she's, she's trying to crawl out of a hole.
And they're trying, and you talk about cuts, well, like she said, they make their money for billing for time, so if you cut an employee, that employee can't bill for time. So, it's a, uh.
I mean, those numbers there are bad enough to where, if I was on the train and you see that pull in case of emergency to stop the train, I'd be pulling it.
Well, and, if you, and I keep saying this over and over, but if you watch that public, and that's one of their slides, is a fire alarm, a five-alarm fire.
Let me ask you another question. Do you have any takeaway from your presentation to the George County Board? Uh, specifically, you know, we are pursuing other alternatives. Is George County pursuing other alternatives to, in essence, go out on their own, or to associate with another larger district?
I, I believe that they have considered all those options.
And, well, Ms. Brooks, would, would you like to join in? Please do, if you'd like to add anything.
'Cause I would think, there, there's gotta be a path for both of us, and we need, we owe each other to help say, all right, that's the best path for you, that's the best path for you, and whatever that is, we need to support each other in moving down those roads. I mean, 'cause at the end of the day, it doesn't matter what Jackson County or George County gets, it matters what the patients get. I mean, we're just the political entities that give money to it, and we're a customer. Uh, but we, it exists to take care of our constituents in our counties, and people that are outside of our county if they come in, I mean, that's just what it is, that's what, that's how mental health works. We got, any more questions, or?
Ms. Brooks, you wanna add anything to it?
I don't think I, I know you just did, I could add, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and, uh.
And then I, I will try to get you the information that you asked for, and anytime that any of you have more specific information, and I am available to anybody that wants more specifics.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we've got four minutes before hearing, and we've got storm, how long storm, the folks for stormwater, are y'all here? Come on, are y'all gonna be, how, relatively fast? Okay, all right. We don't have to start for the hearing exactly.
Morning, by the way.
All right.
My name's Brandon Pasquini, this is Danielle Upshaw passing out the PowerPoints for y'all. I just wanna say thank y'all for y'all's time, too. Uh, we're gonna be going over this year's Jackson County Stormwater Program Management. The, as to.
Give my road manager one.
The guy here.
Yeah, right there in the jacket, yeah.
Right there in the jacket. So, the Stormwater Management Program, or the SWMP, helps conveyances and facilities throughout the county stay in compliance with the MS four permit itself. This will include the six minimal control measures we'll discuss later in this presentation. And here is just the definition of the municipal separate storm sewer system, or the MS four permit, and its purpose, and like I said, I'll try to go through this quick, so I won't be reading it. Um, here's our more important definitions, including the Clean Water Act, which is, just establishes structure for regulating discharges of pollutants into the waters of the United States. And then we have better, best management practices, which is BNP's, which is just , uh, practices to prevent or reduce pollution of the state. This can be everyday help, like cleaning up trash off-site, or anything that can prevent discharge leaving the facility. And then we have an outfall, which is just a point source where municipal separate storm sewer discharges to the waters of the United States. A couple more definitions, we have the NPDES, which is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. This refers to Section 402 of the Clean Water Act. And we have illicit discharge, which is any discharge to storm sewer that is not entirely stormwater, so that could be anything from grass clippings to oil. And then we have dry weather field screening, this is when we do our screening, uh, biennial through the year. We like to do this because during dry weather, any flow in the system is potentially illicit discharge, because it's something other than the rainfall itself. And then some goals and planning components of the permit itself. Uh, we have pers- personnel training requirements, pollution prevention, and good housekeeping for operations, monitoring, reporting, and record-keeping requirements, some stormwater quality requirements, and the six minimum control measures. And those six minimum control measures include public education and outreach of stormwater impacts, public involvement and participation, which is, the county does that throughout the year. We have illicit discharge detection and elimination, or IDE, we have construction-side stormwater runoff control, post-construction stormwater management, and new development and redevelopment. And we also have pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations. And we visit three facilities to inspect throughout the year, twice a year. We have the central roads, east roads, and west roads. And here are some pictures that I took myself throughout the year of great, uh, BNP's or Better Management Practices. We have tires covered, we have silt fencing, uh, secondary containment for these tanks, just in case if any spills. And then we also visit sixteen different conveyances throughout the county twice a year. And we did that this year in May and October of this year during a dry period, and here are some pictures of just clean, nothing blocking the s- sewers. And some more examples of BNP's monitoring on job sites and conveyances and cells, including some berms and silt fencing. And some important contact informations here is the planning department, the stormwater division, and we have hazardous spills, just in case we have any major spills that need fixing and solid waste landfill. And then I'll give y'all, if y'all have any questions, real quick through here, and if not, I mean, you can contact me at this phone number here, or my email, or Elizabeth's email, who did it last year, I don't know if y'all remember, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
All right, so.
Mr. Ketchaud, are you ready? We, we almost made it, I think we're one minute over.
Actually, the first one that we have on the list is, uh, sixty-eight twenty-eight Jackson County Line Road, we're gonna have to pull that one. We had a notification issue with that, the sign that was, that we posted on the property was posted at the wrong parcel, so we're gonna have to bring that one back to you guys at a, a later date.
All right. Do you need action to do that? Do we need to take action today to postpone it, or?
I don't think we do, if you just check, make sure there's nobody here for that.
Okay, is there anybody here for the six-eight-two-eight Jackson County Line Road? Six-eight-two-eight Jackson County Line Road? I don't see anybody. All right.
Yeah, I, I, I'd say, just, I mean, probably don't need it, but let's have a motion just to pull it, just so I can prepare an order, and we'll have something in the, in the minute showing why it wasn't acting on.
We know when we wanna reset it for, or?
Not yet, we, we'll have to look, look on, find a date, and then send out new notices.
It's more for record-keeping, I don't know legally we need to do it, if anybody down the road was looking, seeing the minute.
Minutes rule is pretty big.
Yeah, the minutes rule, yeah, whatever happened to, uh, to this, we'll just have something.
Right. All right, do we have a motion to pull item A, eight A?
So moved.
We've got a motion by Mr. Combs, second by Mr. Morris, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so now we've got ten twenty, I guess you can go ahead and get started setting up for the ten twenty.
Yes, sir.
And we'll just have to wait two minutes. Is anybody here for item B, the eighty-nine sixteen Orange Lake Road? Okay.
Joey, did you get the packet? Did you get the packet?
I guess we did, we got ten twenty.
Okay. Uh, the next item we have is eighty-nine sixteen Orange Lake Road. This property is, is owned by Charles Bingham. Uh, we have been listed at thirty-seven twenty-five Dancler Street in Moss Point. We sent notifications to that address, and also notifications to the Orange Lake address. We received no response back from the Bingham's. Of course, we sent out letters, we posted, courthouse posted a sign on, on the property, we're receiving nothing back. As you can see from the pictures, that, that house is just completely burned, and it's in terrible shape, it's ob- an obvious menace, so we'd like to get that cleaned up.
You've heard nothing back from him, though?
No, sir, we hadn't, and actually, I know Mr. Bingham, and, um, this was his daughter's house at one time, way back. Uh, I remember when, after, uh, one of the floods flooded the house, and they repaired it for his daughter, but I guess it burned sometime in between. Uh, but, he works for Micro Methods, we actually use, utilize him sometimes for different things, but we, we haven't heard anything back from him.
Is there anybody here in support of keeping the house not being a menace? Anybody here for not declaring it a menace? All right, anybody here to declare it a menace? Okay, so go ahead, you can, you can talk first, if you're not, if you don't want it to be declared a menace.
Okay. Oh, okay, well, Mr. Bingham is here.
Okay.
He wasn't looking. I agree, it is.
Name an address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Charles Bingham, thirty-seven-two-five Dancler Street in Moss Point, and I also own the property eighty-nine sixteen Orange Lake Road. Um, so, um, just over a year ago, it was actually the day after Thanksgiving, um, I had an offer to buy the house, and, uh, the, the folks, uh, were in, you know, desperate need, they had to get out of their place in Mobile, and, uh, I made a deal with them, they're my Realtor, it's all, you know, legitimate, um, sales contract, you know? I gave them till December thirty-first to, uh, come up with the funds. In the meantime, I leased them the house. Unfortunately, and, you know, I'm old enough, I should know, you know, really, I shouldn't make risky moves, but this house, uh, the last renters, um, I, I, you know, after they were evicted, um, they left a mess, and these folks were, uh, coming in to, uh, clean it up and fix it up, and they had done a really great job up to this point. Unfortunately, the fireplace, and according to the, uh, fire inspector, there is nothing that was designed wrong about the fireplace, but it was intense heat that night that they had, you know, going up the, the chimney, and the chimney caught the attic on fire, and when it did, it burned up through the second story, and, uh, you know, they were in the house. The son actually was upstairs in his room, and he saw the flames coming up around the chimney, um, out his window. So, um, I agree, it is a, it is a nuisance. I, I did try to call, uh, contact Ms. Elizabeth a couple of times, uh, and it was really hard to, I couldn't, I, I couldn't ever, you know, get through to her. But, um, either way, I got the letter, you know, and, and the letter i- is, you know, I guess just reading that letter that, that Marcus sent, um, is pretty threatening, I mean, it looks like I need to get it tore down right now, and, you know? So I was like, well, I don't have any choice, I don't have any recourse in this, and then, so I, I talked to a friend of mine that's a demo contractor, um, and he said he would, you know, handle it for me, um, you know, and I obviously, you know, saved a little bit of money by using him, but, um, he said, you know, I've dealt with, you know, the same kind of issue in Jackson County, and he actually personally dealt with one, that was, that was a home that was, uh, an older woman, she still lived in the home, I guess, but, uh, you know, she got a letter similar to mine, and, you know, and I agree, you know, maybe the place needed to be tore down, but he was, he said he could fix it up and get her back, you know, in compliance and everything, but he ended up having to demo it, and he couldn't get any, I don't know his situation. I'm just, I would, I didn't wanna do anything, and I feel terrible, I got a couple of my neighbors from over there that are here, I feel terrible that the place has got a big burned-out hole in it, and it's got, um, you know, burned-out stuff around it, um, and I wanna get it taken care of, but I wanted to come talk to you guys first, you know, make sure that I'm not gonna be forced to tear it down. It does have a, a nice, uh, metal storage barn that, um, I understand would have to go with it, because it's not a living structure, and, uh, I believe the front of the house, you know, from a couple people that I've had look at it, um, could be torn off, and the, there was actually like, that house is built in three different phases, and there's one section of it that really has, other than just some smoke damage, there's no, uh, and a little bit of water damage from the water that came down through, there's no damage to it. Um, I'd like to be able to repair it.
It's, it's in a flood zone, right? Yeah, explain to him about the flood zone issue.
Yeah, anytime there's more than fifty percent damage to a home, you have to meet the elevation requirement for that area, so the whole home would have to be elevated.
Oh, really?
And I think.
And that's, and that's of the assessed value, not the appraisal value, it's of the assessed value by the county, uh, tax assessor's office.
I get you.
So, most houses that are in the flood zone don't qualify to be repaired. Then if you did repair it, your ins- your insurance is gonna be so high on it that you, you, you would, you wouldn't be able to afford it.
Yeah.
Uh, anything that's below the BFE that's been repaired, i- is the flood insurance is like outranging.
Is there any chance I'm able to keep the, uh, storage building there?
I don't believe the storage building is the menace, I think the home is the menace, but at some point, you know, since there's not gonna, gonna be a home there, you need to come back to our, uh, planning commission president and ask to keep that, or put a home there at some point, you know, we'd have to have a plan in place for that.
So you're saying y'all will work with me, as far as?
Absolutely, for sure, yeah.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I, yeah, I, I, I'm gonna go ahead and take care of the, the house, um, I wanna be able to do it, I don't want, uh, you guys charging me for it.
And, and that, the, the process we have, if we declare it today, it's, it's about a month before it comes back with bids to us, so you've got ample time to get your own and move forward with that, and, and if you do get that before we move with ours, you're free to do it.
Then that goes on the docket, from what I understand, there's like seven days notice from the time it's posted, and then it's?
There won't be a notice for that. If they declare it a menace today, it'll go to our purchasing department, they'll send out, uh, notifications to contractors, they'll come out and, and, uh, do bids, then it has to come back to the board for approval, so that process is probably a month and a half, so it'd probably be two, two months before it actually got.
If you would have that time to get it tore down, if you don't have it before that time, we'll.
If you say it fine back with me, I'm sorry, Mr. Combs.
No, that's fine, Marcus.
Uh, I'll let you, I'll let you.
Okay, thanks, Marcus. Um, initially, I will, for, for the sake of my neighbors, I, I do need to go out there and clean up that burned-out, the chimney, you probably saw the photos there and all that, uh, debris that's there, um, you know, but the house is, uh, secure, you can't get in it, it's locked, and, oh, you could get in it, I guess, but, um, and, uh, so as soon as I can get my, um, the guy that I've, a friend of mine, uh, demo guy, to, uh, get it on his schedule, I'll, I'll, I'll do what I can to get it.
You, you're doing a situation like this, would like to go ahead and declare a menace in case something involves certain.
Well, it is a menace, I, I agree, I'm not denying that.
And if you're, and if we get a quote, and it happens to be a better quote, that gives you, you can use one of them, too.
Absolutely.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well.
One, one issue, Marcus, then the, the quote we get will not include the building, the,
that, that's not what we have as, we have.
Just the house.
Okay, well, that was something I would kinda wanna clarification on, too, because I, you know, I've got a lot of stuff in the storage building.
We'll also need to fix that, because, you know, that, you're, you're not supposed to have a storage building on this property without.
I get, I get that, I get that, um.
So, if you come through our.
And our Mardi Gras crew was able to, uh, go to the city of Pascagoula and get a variance on our property where we keep our floats and that, so I'm hoping that maybe I could get a variance to might possibly.
You can come and pop that, if it would, I'll include it, I'll consider it.
Okay, all right, great, okay, all right.
Is it your district? Anybody else wanna speak on that?
Do you want?
Did anybody else wanna speak on that?
I think there was somebody too.
Does anybody else wanna speak?
We, we could, if this don't make you.
Okay, all right. So is there, everybody's good? Okay.
We'll make a motion, uh, to have the property at eighty-nine-one-six Orange Lake Long, Orange Lake Road declared a menace to public health, and, uh, it's PIDN number zero-one-one-two-three-four-three-five-point-zero-zero-zero.
We've got a motion by Mr. Combs, a second by Mr. We've got a motion by Mr. Cumbus, a second by Mr. Bossarge. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I think we're good for the next one.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, the next item we have is 4316 Creola Taylor. The property owner is Kevin Harris. We have him listed as living in Washington. We did send notifications there. He was supposed to at one time pull permits to repair this. I don't think it's feasible to do that, but we never had an application for that. Of course, we've sent notifications. I have talked to realtors. Several people have been interested in purchasing this house. In my opinion, of course, this is in a flood zone also, and with a BFE of like 17 foot. So, in my opinion, I think that it's probably more than 50% that it couldn't be repaired. But there may be somebody here to speak otherwise on that. But if you look at the pictures, you can tell. We've had a lot of complaints about this structure in this neighborhood. We've done several cleanups in that area.
All right. Is there anybody here supporting not tearing this down? Are you for not? Okay.
Yeah, I'm not. I'm kind of in between.
Come on.
I just need to talk. I'm in between. I don't want to make Marcus mad at me. You don't want him mad at you or the judge.
David, beg you for that.
David Gregory. I own several pieces of property on that road, on that street. I own this house. I sold it last summer. I've owned it since '12 or '14. It's been sitting vacant since Hurricane Katrina. When I bought it, I didn't know the 50% thing. I thought it was 50% phrase value. That's why I never fixed it. I sold it last summer to this guy from Washington, my realtor did. And he thought he was going to come out there and live and fix it up. Well, somehow or another, they said, well, you got to tear it down immediately. He was living in a truck on that piece of property. And they said, well, you can't live in this truck. I told him he could go to IG Levy and live, or live under the bridge in Bonham and Lowes, but you can't live on your own piece of property. There's been $8,000 in taxes paid on that piece of property since '05 because there's a structure on it and the taxes is right at $400. Once that structure's gone, it's going to go down to about $100 in taxes. He couldn't be here today because he don't got no money. I mean, any man living in a truck in the summertime don't have no money. And that's what he was doing. He wasn't a nuisance to me. The building is, you know, it needs to be tore down. It's in a flood zone. It's, you know, it's got to be jacked up. It needs a lot of work. That's why I sold the place. But my proposal, or whatever, county's got backhoes, dump trucks, and the manpower and a free dump on Seaman Road. If Marcus wants it tore down, why can't y'all tear it down? It's done been $8,000 in taxes paid on it in 20 years, you know, and what, nobody going to school there, no garbage or nothing. So, I meant the tax dollars is done paid to have it tore down. Instead of having three bids coming, there's probably at least five grand now to tear one down because they're going to have to go pay, what's cost the most is paying to get it, you know, put to the dump. And I know y'all are going to say, well, we can't go on private property, but the county's got attorneys and it's one signature, you know, they can go on a man's property.
Make you go on it, but I'm not so sure that it would be an illegal donation. The county can't do things for free for people. And these gentlemen, if they chose to go that route, I don't think it'd take me too long to look into that, come up with an answer. They could be personally liable for the cost of that service. The county just can't give, just can't, very strict laws on the county giving things to people. And the state auditor could come back in quickly.
Anyway, so I talked to him this morning. He said, if y'all give him six months to a year, he could come back and live there and tear it down, and he wouldn't be charged for tearing it down. He could tear it down. Look, that truck he was living in was full of tools. And what the guy supposedly did is he went to Hurricane, he went, he come down here and he goes out and works volunteering, just work during hurricanes and national disasters. He'd been down in Florida. Now, I don't know, you know, that's just going by what he says. I know he had tools and he knows how to do things. But he had been there about three months when he started Elizabeth and them to come down there and made us all clean up. Boy, they're going to beautify that out there. It's going to be so pretty. Anyways, that's all I had to say.
All right. Thank you. Is anybody else here for or against tearing this house down?
All right. David Gregory's a character. I've known him forever.
Yeah, a long time, yeah.
I used to go to church with him. He's something else. But he's got all the money in the world. He could help a friend out and tear that thing down himself. Don't let him pull you. He's-
You got extra room, he can stay there.
He's going to stay quiet now.
All right.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll make a motion to declare the property at 4316 Creola Taylor Road, Moss Point, Mississippi, PIDN number 01127090.000, a minister public health.
We've got a motion by Mr. Cumbus, and a second by Mr. Morris. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
We have action items?
Just quickly, I put agenda in front of you. These are the four projects that we are pursuing during the legislative session. Two of them are Tideland's projects and two are Go Mesa projects. Be glad to talk about any of those if you want to talk about them, but just mainly presented that for your information.
All right, so, brings the supervisor items. Mr. Cumbus?
Yeah, I have a resolution to appoint Danny Glass Cox to the Election Commission Board, and I will make that motion.
We've got a motion by Mr. Cumbus.
I'm second.
A second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to vote no.
That was a 4-1. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Morris?
I have nothing.
Mr. Taylor?
No, sir.
I don't have anything. Mr. Bossarge?
No.
All right, that brings to closed session to determine if we have sufficient evidence for an executive session.
I'll make that motion.
The items are?
Yes, sir. We have pending litigation, Jackson County versus George County. And did I understand, Mr. Taylor, that you wanted to-
We probably need to amend the agenda before we do that.
Right, amend the agenda to add personnel matter with regard to emergency services.
All right. So, do we need to withdraw that original motion before, so we can amend it?
Did he, we hadn't made a motion yet, have we? Or haven't we?
Barry said he would-
I'll withdraw it.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, the other motion, yeah, to go into-
Do we have a motion to amend the agenda to include those items, the personnel item?
Okay.
I had one that I added, I guess at the beginning of the meeting, so.
Okay, all right, to amend those items.
Okay. I'll make it my-
All right, Mr. Cumbus?
One second.
Second by Mr. Bossarge. All in favor? Many opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, could make a motion to go into closed determination.
Sure, okay.
Three issues are personnel matter with regard to emergency services, pending litigation, Jackson County versus George County. And Brian, I forgot-
I had potential location of a business.
Right, I'm sorry. Potential location of a new business.
All right, we've got a motion to go into closed session. A second by Mr. Morris. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.